I call to order this zoning meeting of Knox County Commission for Monday, February 21st, excuse me, Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lundie.
Here.
Commissioner Garrett.
Here.
Mr. Oster.
Here.
Mr. Ward.
Here.
Mr. Schoonmaker.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Beeler.
Here.
Mr. Daley.
Here.
Mr. Jay.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier.
Present.
All members are present.
We do have a quorum. Director Moyers, I will turn it over to you for those who are here to testify.
Thank you. Anybody who is here to address the commission on any matter on the agenda tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. If you're here to speak to this commission on any matter for or against, please stand and raise your right hand. People just keep popping up. You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God. Be seated, please. And let me remind you that any person lying to or intentionally misleading the Knox County Commission, its committees, subcommittees, or any Knox County Board or Commission authorized by county ordinance or state statute while testifying as a witness under oath shall be guilty of the offense of civil perjury. Each such offense shall be punished by a fine of $500.
Thank you, Director Moyers. Before we get started with our first item, junior commissioners, I wanted to point out a meeting cheat sheet that's on, that should be in front of you. It does indicate different things regarding this zoning portion of our meeting. If you have any questions, you can reference it. Okay, Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Okay, item 56 is deferred to March. So we're at item 57, which is 12-0-22-RZ, request of Joel A. Cannon III for rezoning from A agricultural to RA low-density residential. The property is located at 8308 Pettigo Road, parcel ID is 03710202, part of. It's in the 7th Commission District.
Is the applicant present? Thank you. Please approach the podium. State your name and address for the record. Is there, and go ahead.
My name's Joel Cannon and 8226 Pettigo Road.
Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Other than the applicant? Thank you. Seeing none, Ms. Brooks.
Good evening. The Planning Commission recommendation to County Commission is to approve RA low-density residential zone by a vote of 13 to 0.
Thank you. Mr. Cannon, would you like to speak to your project?
This is my first time. I don't, I didn't have anything prepared. I'll answer any questions or concerns, but...
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions or concerns with this zoning item? Commissioner Lee?
Yes, I have, I had a few questions. I had some notes that this was denied by staff.
It was recommended to be denied by staff.
Okay, and because it was not consistent?
It was not consistent with the growth plan. And so this is my first time, and I've thoroughly enjoyed it learning and the headaches. But so, I thought it was going to be fine. And then when they posted it, recommended to be denied, we said, "How come?" They said the growth plan. It's probably farmland that was so old that Pettigo ran through it. And so it's just that little seven-tenth of an acre is on the left side of the road, the same parcel. The other 15 acres on the other side of the road were in the growth plan. It was just this little chunk, the one that we actually want to build on, that was missing. And so it's not appropriate for agricultural because it's so teeny. And I can't build on it because it's less than an acre, which I learned, because you got to have an acre for ag. And so it had kind of made it useless or unusable the way it was set up.
So what are you going to do with it, then?
Build a single-family home on it.
One single?
Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was my question, just what's the intention of the property? And you, you mentioned a single-family home. And then Director Brooks, because staff recommended denial, I just had a question. The recommendation was for RA. Was PR considered?
I think we had, we had looked at PR because it matched the neighborhood right there. But, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think I was asking for RA because it seemed like less of an ask where, where PR could theoretically support more houses with less of a setback. And so I could have tried to squeeze two houses on here, and I just want to put one and cut my teeth. Not go bankrupt on the first one, yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Lee? Is there any more discussion? Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Yes. Ms. Brooks, question? Because of the unusual shape of this 0.7 acres of land, if we decided to move forward with approval for one home, can we make then, or should we consider possibly that if he's going to do a home there, he cannot come back to the BZA and ask for any variances because he's now created his own hardship trying to build on this unusual piece of property? Because I think something came up in work session about this property and not allowing the purchaser of the property to get any variances on this, on this land. So we could, I'm assuming, make the motion then to approve, but with no variances?
I'll defer to Director Moyers on the legality of that.
Respectfully, Commissioner, I don't think that would be an appropriate motion. The Board of Zoning Appeals exists as a, as an independent quasi-judicial body for a reason. So I don't think you have the authority to tie their hands in that, in that regard.
Even though that the staff has voted to deny this request, the low-density residential...
Well, the staff doesn't really vote. The staff makes a recommendation. The Planning Commission is the one that's empowered to make the recommendation to this commission. This commission is the only body that's actually empowered to change the zoning. But you can change it or you cannot change it, but I don't think that you can condition the change on withdrawing jurisdiction from the Board of Zoning Appeals to consider any variances that it, it might, that might be brought to it. The board can certainly consider if the lot is substandard or too small to build on, that that doesn't constitute a hardship from a variance point of view. But we don't know. He might start putting down footers and find that there's a spring on the property and suddenly have a, a topographical hardship that he has to build around. So I, again, respectfully don't think that that would be an appropriate motion for this body to support.
Thank you.
I think to further clarify what Commissioner Schoonmaker is worried about is that, that the developer, the owner, we want you to be aware, you can't create your own hardships for those to be considered at BZA. Just be aware of that.
Is there any more discussion regarding this zoning item? Seeing...
Um, no, thank you.
Seeing none, I will defer to the District 7 Commissioner. Mr. Lee?
Uh, yes, I'd make a motion to approve the rezoning from agriculture to low-density residential.
Motion to approve per Planning Commission's recommendations by Commissioner Lee with a second by Commissioner Beeler. Any more discussion?
Just remember, we'll watch this and we'll show up at BZA if we see you there.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item?
Item 58 is 1-C-23-RZ. It's a request of William Lawala for rezoning from PR Planned Residential at 1 to 3 dwelling units per acre and RA low-density residential to PR Planned Residential up to 5 dwelling units per acre located at 442 Fox Road, parcel ID 143111 in the 3rd Commission District.
Is the applicant present? Okay, I guess we will move this to the end. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Item 59 is 1-F-23-RZ, request of Igor Chaban for rezoning from A agricultural to PR Planned Residential up to 5 dwelling units per acre located at 0 Ball Road, parcel ID 09116101 in the 6th Commission District.
Is the applicant present? Sir, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Name is Igor Chaban, 6939 Klin Highway.
Will you pull the microphone down just a little bit more? Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item or anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will look to Ms. Brooks for Planning Commission's recommendation.
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve PR Planned Residential Zone at a density of up to 5 dwelling units per acre because it's consistent with the sector plan and the surrounding development.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to speak to your project?
If you guys have any questions, I'm more than welcome to answer, but if not, then...
Any discussion from commission? Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. I, I have some concerns about this just because of the 5 per acre that, that is your ask. I'm noticing that the property surrounding it is either acre or half-acre lots. And even when you step out past that, the, the areas are either 3 per acre or 4 per acre. How many homes are you actually thinking you'll be putting on that property?
So according to the Knox County Commission, and I've been in touch with Mike, and we've been working on this project, we are not allowed to put any more than 35 units on this land. And there's currently a subdivision right across the road, and they, they, they have the same exact zoning, the same exact, and I think it's 5 dwellings per acre as well, if not more. So 35 is caps as we are allowed from Knox County Planning. That's what we're allowed to put on there. We are not allowed to put anything more than that. Now, depending on the layout, depending on all the other stuff, that could be reduced once the engineers, they start designing and, you know, working on this project.
Actually, directly across the street from you, you have, it looks like a parcel of several acres. And then the one immediately, if you're facing the property to the right, the strip is approved at less than 3 per acre.
Commissioner Hill, can you speak into the mic, please?
I'm sorry. Did you hear me?
Not quite, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. The parcel that's directly across the street on Shawed Road is still, looks like it's, it's one home that has, I don't know, 5, 6, several acres.
Well, I'm talking about the lot right over. It's 1 to 4 dwellings per acre. And then the one behind it, it's 5, you know, 5 dwellings per acre, but a house over. So it's, you know, it's, it's more than, more than enough land to simply do and, and put up to 35 units. And according to the staff, there wasn't any problems to do it.
Well, the staff isn't the final say.
And that's why I'm here tonight.
Right. And my concern is even when you get out beyond that, it's, it's less than 5 per acre. It, none of them are zoned right at 5. And I do notice there's 2 streams running through.
Yes.
Through that. I have no idea how wide they are, how much, what are your, what are your plans? I mean, there, those 2 in the back, are you going to cross over one with a bridge or something?
Well, as of right now, ma'am, I, I cannot, you know, assure you what exactly it's going to be doing because I am in the process to work with an engineer on this project. And depending, again, depending on the layout and because of the, because of those creeks and stuff, that number of units would be reduced most likely. 35 is the cap, what, what we're allowed to, or what, you know, we asked for is maximum that we can put in there. Will, will we put 35? I'm not sure. I, I, you know, we have to start on this project. And that's, like I said, that's one of the reasons why we're here to, this is the beginning of the project. It might be 25 units. It might be 30 units. I'm not really sure until we start the designing and, and go back and forth.
Yes, yeah. And I understand that. And I, and I understand too that you don't have to produce a site plan at this stage. I, I mean, I, I do understand your dilemma in this too.
Yeah. And I don't know the size of the creeks. I mean, they would have to, you know, the engineer would have to work on it and get surveyors involved and measure all that stuff. So I, I don't know exactly the size of those creeks that are there right now.
See, my, my concern is that looking at those creeks in the back, I mean, it, it's conceivable you cannot build in that back section at all, which... Because we don't really know how much buildable, usable land you have in there, that approving at 5 per acre, acre could conceivably end up with you squeezing 6 or 7 per acre on the total amount of property. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand exactly what you're saying, yes, ma'am. I think we have about 7 acres of buildable land, you know, considering all the setbacks and all that stuff. And again, I am not really sure until we start working on the project and kind of get the layout and see what we're able to do. But the plan is to put duplexes on these or condos on them, not homes.
Condos?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, attached, attached units?
Yes.
How, how many?
Up to 4 in a row.
All right.
Up to 4 condos.
All right. Well, that definitely makes the difference.
Yes.
You know, as opposed to the full, full homes.
Yeah, there are not going to be homes. There are going to be condominiums, pretty much 4 units and, you know, in a row. And then you'll have another building and a few other buildings.
So when you say condominium, do you mean a, a truly maintenance-free community?
Something like that, yes.
Something like that?
I mean, I'm not exactly sure what you're trying to ask me, ma'am. I mean, I'm just...
Well, typically, when you think of a condominium, they, they have a, you know, an HOA that, that takes care of all of the...
Yes, I understand that they have an HOA, but that's, that's, you know, of course, the finishing project. And, you know, if we decide to sell it later on, then we can arrange all this stuff. But as of right now, we're just trying to build them and ask your permission for it.
All right. I know that, I know that it was probably so easily approved because of the, the improvements there in Shawed Road and that everything, everything Mr. Snowden's going to be dumping out on this new Shawed Road that's going to be newer and, and proven greater. And, and I do understand, you said that there will not be a, a turn lane. And I'm, excuse me, I'm directing this to Mr. Snowden now. There will not be a turn, a turn lane there or even a, a barrier where the street can be crossed in front of that section of property. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. I was looking at the plans just now. There's a, there'll be a right-in, right-out configuration here. There, as you pull up to Mr. Chabane's development to exit, there'll be a median that'll be immediately in front of you. So you'll have to go right to the next median opening. And there's really not a lot of flexibility we have to relocate those median or adjust the openings. So it would be a right-in, right-out configuration.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? All right, thank you.
Commissioner Jay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I guess I'm, this is sort of a question for Commissioner Hill, but also just a, a general question. On this commission, we, we have said time and again, based upon data, based upon reports, that we need more housing. We need all types of housing. We need all types of configurations of housing. And we want to, we've constantly said that we want to encourage that to be on major arteries and growth areas in major corridors. This is about as a major corridor as you can get. This is Shawed Road Accenture with 2 lanes on each side, a median. This is a different type of house that we need the inventory for. I, I'm confused at why we wouldn't, this is exactly why we would put density in a corridor that can handle density versus something similar far out away from infrastructure. So I, I would just sort of remind our commissioners, like, this is exactly what you're asking for. We're asking for different types of housing clustered and concentrated in dense areas. And it looks like a perfect example of what we've been constantly asking people to, to do is find, find innovation that brings people to more major corridors. So I think it's a good project, and I think it's exactly in the right spot. And, and Shawed Road is going to have 50 more of these because that's why we're building this major artery right through our community. So I'll be supporting it.
Commissioner Schoonmaker? You good? Anyone else?
I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve this at not, at, how do I word that when it's less than 5 on the surrounding properties?
We, we can't hear you. I'm sorry.
How do I word that when it's less than 5? 4? I'm prepared to recommend this at 4 per acre as it is truly consistent with all of the other zoning that has occurred around that property.
Second. Motion is to approve... Motion to approve PR zone up to 4 dwelling units per acre, correct? By Commissioner Hill with a second by Commissioner Frazier. Pardon, Commissioner Jay?
Madam Chair, thank you. I'd like to offer a substitute motion to approve at 5 units an acre. There's a neighborhood literally right below this at 5 units an acre. I think it's on a major artery, and it's exactly what we've been asking for, for the type of inventory. And I think it's more than appropriate.
It's 5 of those.
Up to, the one right below that says up to 5 units per acre, right below, to the left. And then there's another one at less than 5 units, or up to 5 units an acre.
It's 5 or less. It's 5 or less.
5 or less. And there's a 3, and there's a 4. This is a major growth corridor. I, I don't understand why we wouldn't approve more growth in our growth corridor. That's, that's why I think it's appropriate.
Can I just add something real quick, please?
Yes.
So before, you know, when I started working on this project, I've had several meetings with the staff, and we were going back and forth before even submitting, you know, all the plans and all these rezoning stuff. So after talking with engineering and went on to the engineering department and getting involved with them and asking them about the road and, and all that stuff, that's where we came with this conclusion. And that's where the staff kind of pointed us in the right, you know, in this direction to ask 5, you know, at least up to 5 units per, per acre. So it wasn't something easy because we've been, we've been going back and forth for the last couple of months, and have quite a few, actually, for about 4 months. And I'm just asking to go ahead and approve this if it's possible. And like I said, it's up to 5 units. It doesn't mean that we're going to have 35 units. Depending on the design, depending on the layout, and depending about, you know, with all those creeks and stuff, it could well be less than that. It could even be 4. It's just at this point, I am not exactly sure until we start designing the project and then coming up with a plan and coming up with the design and then provide, you know, providing it to the staff so they can review it. But I would kindly ask you to approve their, approve the 5 acre dwellings.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier? Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, Commissioner Hill, I think what you were trying to achieve with your motion is that staff recommended 31.4 units as the total number of units that is appropriate for this piece of property, given the topography and the blue line streams. I also just wanted to point out too, that the general plan encourages a pedestrian-oriented neighborhood. And then the sector plan offers this area as a great place for a mixed-use special district conservation subdivision. So that's probably where Commissioner Hill is coming from. The sector plan is offering or encouraging larger lots in a conservation subdivision, which would also be appropriate here. Thank you. Commissioner Oster?
Can I ask you, Mr. Chabane?
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of what price range that you guys are looking at on these condos?
So the condos, as of right now, it's a project that we're thinking to build and maybe rent them out instead of selling. That's the, that's the plan right now.
Okay. What would your rental be?
So depending on the price, everything fluctuates these days.
Right, right. I'm not, I'm not old near the price.
Depending on the price, you know, that each condominium comes out to be anywhere between $1,500 to maybe $2,000, depending on that price range.
Okay.
We can rent them out.
Which that's completely appropriate over in that area.
Yes, ma'am. Especially for the area.
Yeah. I mean, I personally would like you to see you sell it because as a Realtor, we need more housing on the market.
And if the price is right, we would love it.
The price is right. I'm going to put my mic.
Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Hill? I mean, pardon me. There's a substitute motion on the floor to approve PR zoning up to 5 dwelling units per acre by Commissioner Jay with a second by Commissioner Ward. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. That's approved. 9 to you.
Do a good job.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number 60 is 1-G-23-RZ, request of Keith Stewart for rezoning from CA General Business to CB Business and Manufacturing at 1633 Dry Gap Pike, parcel ID 047236 in the 7th Commission District.
Is the applicant present? Okay. Mr. Keith Stewart? Okay. We'll move this one to the end as well.
The next item is number 61, 1-H-23-RZ. It's a request of Bronzy Harris for rezoning from A Agriculture to PR Planned Residential up to 12 dwelling units per acre located at 6010 and 6011 Clayberry Drive, parcel ID 07807201 and 072 in the 6th Commission District.
Is the applicant present? Please approach the podium. State your name and address for the record.
Name is Bronzy Harris, address 109 Winona Street, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37917.
Thank you, is there any opposition to this item? Or anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve PR Plan Residential Zone up to eight dwelling units per acre, because it is consistent with the sector plan and consistent with the surrounding development by a vote of 12 to 1.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, would you like to speak to your project?
I would, thank you. We would like to request this evening that County Commission actually approve for 12 acres, 12 dwelling units per acre. The reason that we're requesting that is since we, apologize, since we went before the Planning Commission, we actually have gone back to our civil engineer, Scott Williams, and asked him to design us a road that would tie into one of our properties that is adjacent, that actually is on an arterial highway, and so we are going to use that road primarily for our residents to funnel them back out to Oak Ridge Highway, and that should reduce down the traffic. We actually have met with the neighborhood as well, they had a lot of concerns about the traffic on Clayberry, I think Planning Commission had the same concerns, just that we weren't tied into an arterial highway, and that we would be coming out through Clayberry. So what we're proposing to do is bring a road back onto Willow Place Apartments, and have our traffic go through there primarily.
Thank you, sir. Fellow Commissioners, any questions or discussions? Commissioner Skoomaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Snowden?
Yes, sir.
What are your concerns about the road access, the way he's describing it?
We shared in some of the concerns with the density using Clayberry Drive, because it is residential street dead end, so from the transportation perspective, we would much prefer them to access the arterial street where there's adequate turn lanes along Oak Ridge Highway.
So they would access through Willow Bend Way, is that the, I didn't quite follow what you were?
That's correct, I have a couple of, I don't have the big drawing with me here tonight, but I can give you kind of a look of where our apartments are and where the road would tie on. Did you guys pull, yeah, there you are, pulled up the property, so if you look, the yellow highlighted ag that has the two buildings on it is the property we're requesting, Willow Bend is right next to it, we've actually built out 20 senior apartments there, but we want to come down the right side that would run by, if you know the area, it's the Carm Building there, or the Carm Rental Store, I guess, and, or used goods store. So we'd want to come down and tie into our own property there, so.
Just for, just for, you need to get back at the, just for clarification, as he's returning, the apartments they're tying into are existing low-income senior housing, one-bedroom, single-level homes, and the tie-in will be for the same type of housing, so it's just a continuation of an existing neighborhood.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you, if I'm clear, would you then be terminating any entrance and exit into Clayberry?
No, we wouldn't terminate that, and I don't think that the residents had any issue with that, they just wanted us to direct our traffic back onto our property, and for our, the people that were going to house our tenants to go out towards Oak Ridge Highway.
So it wouldn't prevent somebody from still going back through the other end of the neighborhood?
That's correct, it wouldn't, although we wouldn't open up the road, the road would have a buffer there, just a slight buffer or a median between the Carm Store, that open retail space there, and ours, so it wouldn't be directly open to that, it would open only onto our property.
Okay.
It would tie back into our existing paving and driving.
So if I, am I clear in that although Planning Department voted to move it forward at, how many units here?
Eight.
Eight, you're asking this body to consider 12, which was your original application, because the other apartments that you currently exist, that this would all be an extension of, I see one is zoned for 12, one is up to 18.
That's correct.
And so you're asking to be consistent with those and go above what was already voted through.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Director Snowden, Director Brooks, can you speak to the access remaining on Clayberry? Was that the assumption with the alternative access being presented? And also to you, I wanted to thank you for reaching out to the community and having that dialogue with them, and giving them an opportunity to express any concerns, and for you to answer any questions, we really appreciate when applicants do that, so thank you for doing that.
Let Amy speak, too, but Commissioner Frazier, to your point, this, first I've heard of this connection, I mean, I think it's a, it's a good idea in the sense of it's going to bring traffic to that arterial street, but I would prefer the connection to Clayberry be terminated, it's, you've essentially got a public street that's going to go through his development, that's going to act like a public street, because you're attaching two, put two public streets together with a private street in the middle, and that's problematic for us.
Director Brooks, do you concur?
I concur with what Director Snowden just said, I have concerns about keeping the access open on Clayberry, I couldn't support that. You concur?
Commissioner Jay?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Moyers, could you, would that be considered a conditional zoning if we were to support his request, but with the condition that Clayberry would be terminated and he would have to funnel through his existing property, is that allowed? Or would that be a conditional zoning that would not be allowed?
Well, it is a conditional zoning, conditional zoning is allowed, it's contract zoning that's not allowed.
Contract zoning, sorry.
So it would be conditional zoning, you do have the power to do conditional zoning, that would be a conditional zone, yes.
Okay, that's, I will always defer to our first steps with the district commissioner, but I would also, I would, I'd be open to approving his request at a higher rate than it was sent to us, but with the termination, because I, this is similar to, I want to say it's like North Hampton Commons, or it was another one that we dealt with before, where they were kind of like shoehorning a neighborhood in behind another neighborhood, and I think that out of respect for the existing neighborhood and not have that cross traffic, I would be willing to support the higher one, but we'll see what the motion is.
Is there any more discussion? Commissioner Hill?
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Harris, and they did in fact have a neighborhood meeting, speaks to the fact that no one's here objecting to it on Clayberry, the excellent job that was done with some give and take on it, I think that the, part of the reason that they had talked about still leaving some access, although I don't think it's a deal breaker, was just for perhaps more of a convenience of the few employees that might be working there, and the truth of the matter is, this being a senior facility, there are many, many less cars than there typically would be in a group of one-bedroom apartments, so the residents of Clayberry were actually comfortable with not having that totally closed off because of that very reason, this is not going to be a major thoroughfare anyway, even once it is completed, because of the age of the residents. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Harris?
That's correct, and the other thing that we had thought about with Clayberry being open was easier for, like, E911 services to be able to move through the neighborhood as well, and so to be able to get to our seniors, because we do have, you know, calls, and then also the fire trucks, and you have to have a turning area, so it kind of creates additional road work, like you said, it's not a deal breaker for us, and it's just not something that came up within the, within the community meeting, so again, I don't know that we have any opposition to closing off Clayberry, but we did, we were mostly thinking for emergency services to be able to come through it a little bit easier.
I appreciate that, I really do, I still defer to our Director of Engineering and Public Works with that being problematic, tying in private and public roads. I do, I appreciate, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that the folks in Clayberry, but as Commissioner Jay said, we've set a precedent already by not allowing access through a residential subdivision on another project, and so you need to remember that.
Commissioner Oster?
I just want to thank you for having a community meeting, and I think that's always good to, for you guys to come and talk to the community and find out what's going on, it does speak volumes not having anybody here to oppose it. I also want to say, we talk about all different kinds of housing, and we're worried about all kinds of different housing, and sometimes I think our seniors on very fixed incomes kind of get forgotten in that, so I really appreciate that we are doing that, and I know the area, I know that you guys have done a really good job on that, and with the economy the way it is, I think you guys are going to probably fill them up really quick, so I appreciate you looking out for that sector of the community that really needs it.
Sure, and we have a, we have a two-year waiting list on our senior housing right now, so I'm not worried about filling it up, but we also are entertaining and wanting to get to that 12-unit per acre number, because there is such a need, we were going to use Clayberry before at basically at 40 units or eight units per acre, so again, not necessarily opposed to it being closed off, but I guess it just kind of terminates and kind of walls us in, so to speak, so.
And I agree with Commissioner Frazier, I'm always probably going to defer to Mr. Snowden.
Sure, and in fairness to him, he is correct, we did not talk about the additional road before tonight, it was brainstorming, then we went out and talked to the neighborhood, so.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Hill?
I am prepared to offer a motion to approve this at 12 per acre, with the condition that when it's all said and done, Clayberry does end up being a closed road.
Motion is to approve up to 12 dwelling units per acre with the closing of Clayberry Drive, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it the closing of the drive, or they just closing off this development to the drive?
Access. Closing off access.
Right.
Thank you, thank you for that.
By Commissioner Hill with a second by Commissioner Frazier. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, sir. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item 62, 1-D-23-SP, is a request of Alexander Cekowski for a Northeast County Sector Plan Amendment from AG Agricultural and RR Rural Residential at 7614 Washington Pike, parcel ID 03104502 in the 8th Commission District.
Is the applicant present? Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
That's my partner, Igor Chabon, 6939 Glen Highway.
Thank you, sir. Is there any opposition to this item, or anyone who wishes to speak? If it's just to the zoning piece, then we'll wait, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the Sector Plan Amendment to RR Rural Residential, because it's consistent with the development of the area by a vote of 13 to 0.
Thank you. Wish to speak to this project?
It's just a very simple project, we're building three residential homes for sale, that's about it, we're just trying to split it up into three different, three different lots, and just to build three residential homes in some of them.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or discussion regarding this item? Commissioner Wheeler?
I have a question for Mr. Chabon.
Yes, sir.
What would the access be to these, to these three houses if you?
So, right now, we're actually in the process of, with the staff, we gave them a copy of the plan, the design plan and stuff, so we're going to enter from Washington Pike, and the discussion is right now, the, I guess the engineer there wanting us to use one driveway, and just kind of share the driveway between three of them, and we're just going back and forth to see if we can have another driveway for the front of the front house that's closer to Washington Pike, to have its own access, and then the two will be sharing one driveway.
Okay.
But the access will be from Washington Pike.
Okay, there wouldn't be any access from the property behind it?
There's no access, no.
Okay. Mr. Snowden?
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Is there going to be room for additional driveways there? Is there a driveway there at that other property where it comes down beside it?
I believe there is, we were looking at this one today, just saw the plan, literally today, and I think the plan shows one driveway accessing two units towards the back at the existing location, and then the lot that I guess would be closer to the creek, or closer to Washington Pike and the creek, would have a, would have a second driveway. Haven't given that a lot of consideration, but my first blush on it would be to consolidate those driveways and have one driveway, just to eliminate conflict.
There is, there is an existing driveway on the property now, it's just hard to see it with the overlays the way they are, okay. I mean, I'll defer if anybody else has questions or comments.
Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Director Brooks, the Northwest County Sector Plan allows PR at one dwelling per acre clustered in rural residential, so why do we, why does he need a Sector Plan Amendment? And to the body, again, we've set a precedent in the December meeting, a very similar case, we upheld the Sector Plan, so just remember that, but can you tell me?
Can you repeat your question, please?
Just the Northwest County Sector Plan allows PR at one dwelling per acre clustered in the rural residential, and then the Growth Policy Plan allows two dwellings in rural areas, so why are we not upholding the Sector Plan? Why do they need a Sector Plan Amendment?
Well, the Growth Policy Plan, I think typically the way, the Growth Policy Plan is the one that controls, so everything needs to adhere to the Growth Policy Plan itself. I think that there's been some inconsistencies in how those densities have been applied, and when you look at the different sector plans, and I'll just, you know, admit that based on when they were updated, you might see some differences in terms of the dwelling units per acre permitted based in that land use classification, does that make sense?
It does, and that's why I'm asking, because in the past, staff has recommended that we follow the Sector Plan or the most current plan, in this case, the Sector Plan is more current than the Growth Policy Plan, and so I guess I'm confused as to the inconsistencies, and why now are we referring to the general plan, and again, because precedent has been set. And again, because precedent has been set, we, we followed the Sector Plan. I, I just, I need some clarification because from a body standpoint, nothing has been communicated to me. Maybe I've missed something as to what we should refer to as what is taking precedent.
I think over the last five to six years, staff have tried to really make a concerted effort to make sure that all recommendations, they're not in conflict, in particular with the growth policy plan. Because I think in the past that has been historically, there's been a disconnect there. So there has been a concerted effort.
You mean when they thought that it wasn't active or, anyway, I won't go there. I think this body remembers for, for a while, the growth policy plan was seen as not current. And then it was, and then the map didn't apply, and then it did. And so now we're back to that it, it does apply. So, and that's, please don't think that I'm directing that at, at planning staff or, or anyone. It is just frustrating. I'm still going to encourage the body to uphold the Sector Plan. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kind of following up on Commissioner Frazier's comments, who has made the directive that we're now to follow the growth plan only and not to the most recent plan that's been adopted by not only NOx Planning, but the Knox County Commission? Somebody's had to make a directive to you all to do that. So I'd just kind of like to know, like Commissioner Frazier, what's going on here?
I don't know that I can answer that to your satisfaction, Commissioner. I don't think that, you know, one, I would probably, I've, I've been out and then I've come back into this, brought up to this. So I'm, you know, I think we're typically here to share the Planning Commission's recommendation to you all. And that is one of the reasons, I'll put in a, how important that the advanced NOx process is and to really take a deep look at how we do planning in this community and to clean up all these different layers. So I think that that's, you know, going forward where we'll start to address some of this.
Any more discussion? Then I will defer to the Commission District 8 Commissioner. Commissioner Beeler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did we scroll that up? The image that's on the screen, can we? Can we, yeah, can we scroll that up to the, like the next map? Keep going. Yeah, that's, that one. Thank you. So, I mean, as Commissioner Schoonmaker, Commissioner Frazier pointed out, I think Mr. Murphy's going to point out, the issue is over really the next item and the density as to whether or not this body should be allowing two units rather than one in this Sector Plan. The Sector Plan Amendment, for obvious reasons, I really don't have an issue with, because this property is literally surrounded by rural residential. So, I mean, I don't, I don't have an issue with the Sector Plan Amendment. I think, I think it is rural residential. So however, I, I do look forward to hearing from Mr. Murphy and discussing the zoning. So my motion on this item is to approve the Northeast County Sector Plan Amendment from AG Agricultural to RR Rural Residential as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Motion to approve per Planning Commission's recommendation by Commissioner Beeler with a second by Commissioner Ward. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? That motion carries. Don't go too far.
Item 63, 1-K-23-RZ, also a request of Alexander Chakovsky. It's for rezoning from AG Agricultural to PR Plan Residential up to two dwelling units per acre. And the property description is the same as the previous item.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
It's Igor Chabon, 6939 Glen Highway.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, you've signed up to speak to this item. Is there anyone else who is in opposition or wishes to speak? So, Mr. Chabon, I will give you time to speak to this, and then I will give Mr. Murphy the equal amount of time of five minutes as well.
I mean, there's really nothing to say. We're just trying to build two residential homes for sale on this property. We're splitting them up into two lots, simple, you know, straightforward, nothing crazy, and we're just trying to sell them. That's all.
Thank you. And what, as Mr. Murphy is getting ready, Ms. Brooks, will you read us Planning Commission's recommendation?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the PR Plan Residential Zone up to two dwellings per acre because it's consistent with the surrounding area by a vote of 12 to 1.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Kevin Murphy, 4508 Murphy Road. So this, this case is kind of interesting. There's been a little parade of requests in the Northeast Sector the last few months for rezonings to the Plan Residential District. Northeast Sector is one of a couple of sectors where when the Sector Plan was adopted, there was, the land use classification table talks about densities allowed in the rural area, and it talks about densities associated with the agricultural land use plan as well as the rural residential land use plan designation. In both of, both that agricultural and rural residential in the Northeast County Sector, it says that in the rural area, that zonings, the recommended zoning is one unit per acre clustered. That's for both agriculture and rural residential in the rural area. So that's what the Sector Plan says. And that document, the Northeast Sector Plan, this was specifically discussed, and that piece of the land use classification table is something that people looked at when the plan was updated in the 2016 timeframe. I remember looking at that. I sure, I went to most of those meetings, and I remember very much paying attention to this is something that was really important. And to see that limit in there was, was important. But, so the, and the, two, two months ago on Millertown Pike, the staff recommendation said to be consistent with all of the plans, it recommended one unit per acre. Now, this time, this, this one came through, and at the Agenda Review Meeting, there was a, a new interpretation that was presented where the staff said they looked at things again, and they've decided that the growth policy plan should be the controlling document here in terms of the density. All right, so let's, let's walk through that. That was, that, and that was new information. And I believe at the Agenda Review Meeting, Director Welch said that the County Commission would get a memo on that. But let's talk through that, because this is, this is really important. First, there is absolutely language both in state statute and the Knox County zoning ordinance. It says that things need to be consistent with the growth plan. State statute, there are specific instructions that land use decisions need to be consistent. In our zoning ordinance, we've also got language in 6 dot 30 that says amendments must be consistent with and not in conflict. And it lists out the growth plan, the general plan, the Sector Plan, land use plan, all those things. All right, so we've, we've got that. We need to be consistent with and not in conflict with. Well, and we have, you know, I've kind of, I think I've, you know, talked about the funnel analogy before, where at the top layer, the broadest layer, you have the growth plan. And that sets out your, your macro, you know, your, your large, large concepts and stuff. And it sets out some things. Then at your next layer, you narrow the funnel down, and you get to our general plan, which gets a little bit more specific on some things. Finally, you get down to sector plans, which are usually the most specific, but we even have small area plans as well and corridor studies. So we have a number of different things. I kind of think of it as a funnel. The growth plan, what's, what's really important is it talks about rezoning in the rural area shall be limited to the following districts. It lists out Ag, the state, and says planned residential densities up to two dwelling units per acre based off things. And then it goes on to say extensions of low-density residential development densities of one to three dwelling units per acre in the rural area shall be limited to the following conditions. So it says that if you want to extend that zoning up to three units an acre, there are some conditions that you have to meet. All right, so we have some, if you want three, you've got some conditions you need to meet. In our Sector Plan land use table, it goes on, and it says, well, we've actually looked at this, and we've said that even if you meet those conditions, we still, for this sector, the Northeast County Sector, we want it to be one unit per acre. Is that, is the, is the top limit there? Now, that, you, you get into legal language of, you know, is that consistent with and not in conflict with? We argue that it is consistent with and not in conflict with the, with the general plan or with the growth plan and the general plan. And by the way, there are things that are in the growth, that are not in the growth plan for density, like the urban area and, and the planned growth area. Those don't exist, those densities aren't in the growth plan, but there are some limits imposed in the general plan, like five units per acre in the planned growth area. So we're, you know, we've used this analogy before. Finally, I think I would argue that we're going to change the way that we're interpreting. Well, this was something that was done through the public process, and if there wants to be a change, let's, you know, that can be proposed, and you can do a text change to the Sector Plan and that land use classification table and take that back through the public process. But an administrative change seems a little bit over the top. Thank you.
Mr. Choban, you can respond?
Well, I truthfully don't have anything to respond. There was just so much, too much to process, you know? I mean, I'm just looking at the maps, and I'm looking at KGIS right now. I mean, everything surrounding it is R1 or, you know, plant residential. So, you know, again, going back with staff, talking with them, discussing with them, they thought it was the best, you know, best way to go and best ask to, to get her approved. And I just, I really, really, you know, want you guys to consider, and hopefully we can get her approved and build these two homes and sell them to those people that are needed.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Thank you. Just a clarifying point. Initially, I thought you said three homes, and then again, you said two homes.
No, Washington Pike was three homes. This Cavalier is two homes.
We're still in Washington Pike?
This is on Washington Pike.
I'm sorry. This is three, yes.
Okay, so on 1.74 acres, you want three homes?
Yes.
Okay. And is the home there going to be torn down?
Yes.
Okay. And that shared driveway that goes to the house in the back, that's what engineering is saying, all the traffic has to go through that shared driveway.
Correct. And we're going to have a turnaround at the end, just as Mr. Snowden, they've responded to our, to our proposed plan, and we're going to follow up with them and do exactly what they're asking us to do. It's going to be one shared driveway.
And Mr. Murphy, then, on the rural residential, they can do two units per acre? One?
Seeing none, I'll defer to Commissioner Beeler.
Just a question, Madam Chairman. So the, the neighborhood, you know, directly to the, to the southeast, which is three, I believe, units per acre, would, would, I, I guess I'll ask either Ms. Brooks or Mr. Murphy or somebody this, would you say that that was approved out of compliance with the Sector Plan? Kevin?
I believe, Commissioner Beeler, I've looked at that one. That one was rezoned back in somewhere between 95 and 2007, so it was a number of years before the 2016 Sector Plan.
Gotcha. Thank you. Yeah, these, three in a row, as, as Mr. Murphy pointed out, three in a row in the 8th District, we've had requests for a Sector Plan Amendment and PR at two units per acre in, in a rural area. This is the tiniest piece of property of all of them. And it is in an area where there's more density. Mr. Snowden, how do you feel about three houses on this piece of property? Is it, is it feasible, or, I mean, I, I look at it, and I can see two, but three scares me a little bit. I mean, I, 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 I'll just be honest with you, this being as small a piece of property as it is, you, you got a neighborhood here that's three per acre, but there's no way on this size property, you're going to be able to get the kind of infrastructure you need in a three-unit-per-acre subdivision. You know, but at the same time, I, I don't necessarily think it has to be limited to one house either. You know, I, nobody's probably going to like this, but I'd, I'd be prepared to make a motion for 1.2, which would allow them to put two houses on. So I'll go ahead and make that motion, actually, to approve this rezoning at a density of 1.2 units per acre.
Motion is to approve PR, the PR zone of up to 1.2 dwelling units per acre by Commissioner Beeler with a second by Commissioner Oster. Commissioner Jay?
I'd love to hear the answer from Mr. Snowden.
Yeah, I was talking to Ms. Chabon there. My concern is, you know, and I don't, and obviously I'm put on the spot here, I don't really, you know, have the topography map or anything like that to really give a look at, but Ms. Chabon said that there was sewer available there. So, you know, that's one of the bigger constraints for, you know, density. So, I mean, just from really high level, 30,000 foot, I, I don't, I don't necessarily see why you, you couldn't engineer to have three there if you so wanted to.
Commissioner Beeler, 1.2 would give you how many units? Just two?
Two.
Any more discussion?
Can I just add something real quick?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm looking, I have the layout, the surveyor layout for the three lots. I mean, Lot 1 closer to Washington Pike is .51 of an acre. Lot 2 is .49, and Lot 3 is .75 almost. So, I mean, it's, they're almost, all of them are at least half an acre, you know? So I don't think that it's, I mean, to put a house, you know, some of these lots, they're 15,000 square feet, not even, you know? So I, I just think that there's plenty, enough room to put three houses on this lot here.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is just a general statement to the body. This is why, before I was even elected, I was advocating for some sort of concept plan at the time of a rezoning application. Because nine times out of 10, the applicant knows exactly what they're going to do with the property, and we wouldn't be having these discussions. And so as we move through advanced NOx, I hope you all will support that during the rezoning process, we do require some sort of concept plan, design plan, something.
Thank you. Any more discussion? The motion on the floor is to approve PR Zone up to 1.2 dwelling units per acre by Commissioner Beeler with a second by Commissioner Oster. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Let the new project, sir, don't go far.
Item 64, 1-L-23-RZ is a request of Alexander Chakovsky for rezoning from AG Agricultural to RA Low Density Residential at Zero Cavalier Drive, parcel ID 092091 in the 3rd Commission District.
State your name and address for the record.
It's Igor Chabon, 6939 Glen Highway.
Any opposition to this item? Seeing none. Ms. Brooks, will you please give us Planning Commission's recommendation?
Excuse me. Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve RA Low Density Residential Zone because it is consistent with the surrounding development. Residential Zone because it is consistent with the surrounding development and sector plan by a vote of 13 to 0.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak to this project?
Yes, but I do have a question about Washington Pike. Can I, real quick, as I wasn't really--
You get close to the mic.
Can I ask about Washington Pike, because I wasn't really sure about the exact answer or the approval? Was it approved for three lots or was it approved for two lots only?
Mr. Beeler?
Oh, I mean, I can answer. 1.2 was the density that was approved, 1.2 units per acre.
So two homes. You speak to this, this project?
We're just building two, two residential homes for sale for this.
Commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner Daley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the call. This was the one that I was concerned about at BZA. You promised that you won't ask any variances there, so I'm good with it.
Any more discussion? Commissioner Frazier?
Just to echo Commissioner Daley, you know, we don't like to see applicants causing their hardships and then bring them before BZA. So just to echo what he said, just be aware of those variances. We don't, we don't want to see them.
We don't want to see you guys either.
Seeing no more discussion, I'll defer to District 3 Commissioner. Commissioner Oster?
Hey, you're finally in my district now, so, yeah. I did actually talk to Alexander yesterday, and he confirmed that you're just doing two single-family homes there.
Yes, ma'am.
So, perfect. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the RA zone because it's consistent with surrounding development and sector plan, and that's it. Thank you.
Appreciate you so much, thank you.
Motion to approve Planning Commission's recommendation is their second. Motion to approve by Commissioner Oster with a second by Commissioner Ward. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any oppose? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item?
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you.
Item 65, 1-M-23-RZ is a request of Adam Wilson for rezoning from A Agricultural to PR Planned Residential up to five dwelling units per acre at 9817 Dutchtown Road, parcel ID 118156 in the 3th Commission District.
Is the applicant present? Please state your name and address for the record.
Adam Wilson, 9505 Caryback Lane, 379323.
Is there any opposition to this item or anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks, will you please read us Planning Commission's recommendation?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve PR Planned Residential Zone up to five dwelling units per acre because it's consistent with the sector plan and the surrounding development by 13 to 0 consent.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to your project, sir?
Yes, this is just a continuation of our project on 9821 Dutchtown Road, and so it'll just be continuing on what was previously approved by the board last March.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion? Seeing none, I will defer to Commissioner Oster.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Wilson. You and I have had a lot of discussion about this, and this is actually right over near me where I live, and this is totally consistent with the, the area of Dutchtown Road. Actually, I think that it's going to add value to the, to the area, so I'm really excited about that. And we've already talked with Mike Willian, or Mike Reynolds, I'm sorry, and if there's an opportunity for you to have to combine the two lots, you're willing to do that, correct?
Absolutely, if that's what's needed.
Okay, good, yeah, because just like Commissioner Frazier just reiterated, we don't want to have, we don't want to be doing any more variances that need to be done. So, okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the PR zone up to five dwelling units an acre because it is consistent with the sector plan surrounding development.
Second. Motion to approve Planning Commission's recommendation by Commissioner Oster with a second by Commissioner Frazier. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That motion carries. Good luck, sir. Thank you.
Good luck, thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item?
Item number 66, 1-G-23-SP is a request of Kishore Taylor for South County Sector Plan Amendment from NC Neighborhood Commercial to MDR Medium Density Residential at Zero Crenshaw Road, parcel ID 147109 in the 9th Commission District.
Sir, would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Ridge Dickert, 1915 Brainer Avenue, Jefferson City. I'm here for Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item or anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks, will you please give us Planning Commission's recommendation?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the sector plan amendment to MDR Medium Density Residential because it provides a transitional land use designation from the commercial node, 13 to 0 vote.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to speak to this project?
Um, I brought some foreplans in last time I was here. I know there was some concern with the entrance and exit on Crenshaw Road, and we're currently trying to figure out a different way in and out, so we plan on obliging by that and not using Crenshaw Road as an entrance and an exit.
Commissioners, any discussion or questions? Commissioner Daley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no problem with the sector plan, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve sector plan amendment to MDR Medium Duty Residential because it provides a transitional land use.
Motion to approve MDR per Planning Commission's recommendation by Commissioner Daley with a second by Commissioner Skidmaker. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That motion carries. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Hold on, your next.
Item 67, 1-P-23-RZ is also a request of Kishore Taylor for rezoning from CA General Business in A Agricultural to PR Planned Residential up to 12 dwelling units per acre, and the property description is the same as the previous item.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Ridge Dickert, 1915 Brainer Avenue.
Is there any opposition to this item or anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission-- I lost my place here. Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the PR Planned Residential Zone up to 12 dwelling units per acre, subject to two conditions by a vote of 13 to 0.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to speak to this?
No, same as last.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion? Mr. Daley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff recommended approval for eight dwelling units an acre. This is a four-acre property that you'll see on your map that was, back in the 70s, was a landfill, basically, construction-type landfill that's got dirt put over top of it. That's the, I talked to Mr. Taylor, and he knows that. I, I have heartburn with 12 dwelling units an acre. Talked with Mr. Snowden, the entrance will be coming off Marville Pike and hopefully lines up with the Fire Department Road. Can't think of the name right off the road, can you, Jim? The road that circles around Wiggles and the Fire Department, that's where it'll line up mostly, correct?
The, the state will obviously be the lead agency on that, but I think it, our concerns is any access to Crenshaw due to the, the existing alignment and the width of it, so that would be my recommendation, yes.
Thank you. Director Brooks, do you know why it went to, from eight to 12? Why, you know, I feel very comfortable at eight, but why did it go to 12?
Commissioner Daley, I'm not 100% sure I can answer that with accuracy in terms of why Planning Commission went with 12 versus eight, but--
Well, I'm going to go with the staff recommendation of eight there, and plus you've got to maintain the two, maintain, number one and number two, maintain the tree buffer for the severe study, and absolutely no clearing or grading until the concept plan is done. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve, let me find it right here, recommendation to approve the PR Planned Residential units up to eight dwelling units per acre, subject to the two conditions.
Motion on the floor?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Skidmaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question is from Mr. Snowden. Mr. Snowden, if, would engineering have concerns if someone is trying to develop a high-density residential unit based on a, top of a demolition landfill?
Not necessarily. That's a risk that can be mitigated by the owner. Obviously, that's a financial decision for them, but, you know, those, those things can be mitigated through different ways of excavation.
So they would basically have to take off the top surface, dig out all the construction materials that are in the ground, and then bring in loads of dirt and fill that in and make it stable?
Potentially, yes. I mean, we, we're, our codes department inspects all footing installation, so they, they would have to be good sound material for, for us to approve that footing installation.
Would you guys require a core sample before you would issue any kind of building permits to make sure that that has been, because I would have trepidations approving a project on a demolition landfill, particularly for residential use, where that property could just--
Yeah, the way that, the way our ordinance is written now, the only time we're, I guess, can require a geotech analysis if, if they are placing a lot of field, because obviously we want to make sure that field doesn't subside. So in this case, I don't necessarily think we could require that, but we certainly would make sure that any footings that were put on grade would be suitable for the foundations.
Okay, and the owner is fully aware of what they're getting into?
Yes.
Commissioner Daley?
Thank you. Commissioner Skidmaker, your great question. I talked to a builder and told him what was happening, and he knows about the property, and he said that, like Mr. Snowden said, the footers may be, may have to be wider and deeper to account for all that, so, and the property owner knows, or the buyer knows that.
So it's just more expensive construction?
Motion on the floor is to approve Planning Commission, excuse me, Planned Residential zoning up to eight dwelling units an acre, subject to the two conditions. Motion was made by Commissioner Daley with a second by Commissioner Frazier. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That motion carries. Thank you. Want to poll the body? Are we in need of a break moment? Yep, all right. 8:35, we will be in recess till 8:35.
I don't think the chair wanted to know that.
She's been getting updates and keeping them to herself. You're well.
Start of the fourth quarter was sixty-one to forty. I'm aware. It's not over yet, but I will call this zoning meeting of Knox County Commission back to order. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
It's item number sixty-eight, one dash R dash twenty-three dash RZ, request of Ned Ferguson for rezoning from A Agricultural to RA Low Density Residential at seven five zero nine West Emery Road, parcel ID zero seven seven one four two, in the sixth commission district.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Ralph Smith, two oh five Lamar Avenue, Clinton.
Thank you, sir. Is there any opposition to this item, or anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks, will you please read us Planning Commission's recommendation?
Certainly. Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the RA Low Density Residential Zone because it's consistent with the surrounding development, and the sector plan by a vote of thirteen to zero consent.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to speak to this project?
If you force me to.
You don't have to. Okay, Commissioners, any discussion or comments? Seeing Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would you like to tell us what your intended use is going to be?
Yeah, we plan on dividing it into three lots and putting some duplexes in there. We'll have a road that comes in directly across from Westerly Winds, and we just, now we just have to do the, as soon as we get the rezoning, we just have to get the engineering right to make it all work.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Commissioner Hill?
I hate to hear that. I thought you were going to just tell me you were going to add a second, uh, home residence on the home. Are you tearing that hu- house down?
Yes, ma'am.
My goodness. Well, it certainly is within the, uh, bounds of what it's surrounded by, so I recommended, I, I recommend we accept the change in zoning to RA as recommended.
Motion to approve Planning Commission's recommendation of the RA Zone by Commissioner Hill, with a second by Commissioner Oster. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any oppose? That motion carries. Seeing you, don't go too far.
Sixty-nine is a re, is a one dash S dash twenty-three dash RZ, request of Ned Ferguson for rezoning from A Agricultural to PR Low, I'm sorry, to RA Low Density Residential at zero seven four two eight and seven four three zero Pellet Street, parcel ID zero three eight zero five zero zero four nine and zero four nine zero one, in the seventh commission district.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Ralph Smith, two oh five Lamar Avenue, Clinton.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item, or anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks? Please read us Planning Commission's recommendation.
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve RA Low Density Residential Zone because it's consistent with the surrounding development and the sector plan by a vote of thirteen to zero consent.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to speak to this one?
In case anybody has any questions, the daycare, who is our original client, wanted to purchase a small piece of property from the church next to it, but they still would be less than an acre in size for their lot, so we had to rezone to get it to where we could have something less than an acre for the daycare. And the church just decided to go ahead and get theirs rezoned too, because A didn't benefit them.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, I will look to the district commissioner, Commissioner Lee.
I had, I had one question. So it's for the daycare, correct?
That's really why it all started, was for the daycare, yeah.
Okay. So it is consistent with the area?
We'll still have to do a use on review, them to do a day, even though they've got a daycare already, we'll still have to do a use on review and do a concept plan and stuff like that, but that's right.
Oh, okay. I'd make a motion that we approve the Low Density Residential Zone because it is consistent with the surrounding development and sector plan.
Thank you. Motion is to approve RA per Planning Commission's recommendation by Commissioner Lee, with a second by Commissioner Beeler. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any oppose? That motion carries. Thank you.
Item seventy is one dash I dash twenty-three dash SP, request of Aziz A Carani for an East County Sector Plan Amendment from MDR Medium Density Residential LI Light Industrial and LDR Low Density Residential and SP Stream Protection to GC General Commercial and SP Stream Protection at five five zero zero Strawberry Plains Pike, parcel ID is zero eight three zero eight two, in the ninth commission district.
Sir, will you please state your name and address for the record?
James Smith, two one six zero Lakeside Center Way. I'm here for Mr. Carani.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Murphy, you've signed up to speak to this item. Is there anyone else that's here to speak to this item? Um, Ms. Brooks? Will you please read us Planning Commission's advocate, uh, recommendation?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the Sector Plan Amendment to GC General Commercial and SP Stream Protection for a portion of parcel zero eight three oh eight two, because it's a minor extension of an existing commercial node.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to speak to this?
I can answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Mr. Murphy? Okay. Commission? Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, there were a lot of public comments on this one, concerns about, um, Swan Pond, the creek flooding.
That's right, yeah.
Can you address that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Downstream, uh, of this, on, uh, Strawberry Plains, where, where it crosses, there's historical flooding. So if you looked at the pictures during the Planning Commission meeting, there's, uh, years of it. Um, but I'm a civil engineer, so, uh, and a rule follower, actually. So we, um, we'll design the property, assuming where the engineer on the project will, will design within Knox County Stormwater Ordinance. We use, we've been using permeable pavers, infiltration basins, rain gardens, those sorts of things to recharge instead of, um, just sending it all downstream. So it's a pretty robust stormwater ordinance that we have to stick to, so we'll, we'll do that.
And I just had a question. Um, the CA zoning doesn't have lighting or landscape design standards, and it allows substantial signage. Was neighborhood commercial considered at all?
We worked with Mike Reynolds and Planning to land on this zone for the, the vision that Mr. Carani had, so I'm not sure what other, what other ones would, would work.
Any more discussion?
I do.
Commissioner Skidmaker?
Did, I'm sorry, did you state what's going on this property?
Well, Mr. Carani, um, his vision is to do some apartments on the backside and some commercial on the front, um, kind of an, an internal pedestrian-friendly, uh, recreational areas. So that, that is, kind of can communicate with the, uh, restaurant on the corner. So that's the plan. There was a, there was a concept plan that we submitted with the rezoning application, uh, to kind of give an idea of, of what he was looking for.
And then all access will be on John Sevier?
No, I think we've got, um, we've got opportunity to work off of both of the, of the highways. Uh, he'll have to work, he's, he's, he's going to work with the restaurant owner to try and clean that up a little bit and, and provide, uh, better access for the entire corner.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, I look to Commissioner Daly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No problem with the sector plan, but we will have a discussion on the rezoning. I'll make a motion to approve the Sector Plan Amendment to GC General Commercial and Stream Protection for the portion of the parcel.
Motion to approve the Sector Plan Amendment per Planning Commission's recommendation by Commissioner Daly, with a second by Commissioner Beeler. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any oppose? That motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Item seventy-one, one dash T dash twenty-three dash RZ, is a request of Aziz A Carani for rezoning from A Agricultural and F Floodway to CA General Business, RB General Residential and F Floodway, and the property description is the same as the previous item.
Will you please state your name and address for the record?
James Smith, two one six zero Lakeside Center Way.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item, or anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks, will you read us Planning Commission's recommendation?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the CA General Business Zone for a portion of parcel zero eight three zero eight two, and the RB General Residential and F Floodway Zones for another portion of the parcel, because it is a minor extension of an existing commercial node and consistent with the sector plan by a vote of twelve to one.
Thank you. Anything you wish to add, sir, to this rezon request? Commissioners? Any more discussion? Commissioner Daly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it Mr. Smith? Is that correct? I guess first question would be to Amy. Amy or Jim. I got heartburn with the RB Zone. Why do we, why couldn't we go to, do we have, why do we have to have the RB Zone? RB Zone requires really no plan. They can go start grading anytime they want to?
You don't have to go to RB. I mean, you could, you could go to Plan Residential as well.
Okay, we'll go to PR. I don't, RB's a heartburn. So, uh, there is a lot of flooding there. The soccer, soccer fields just down from the, this property does flood, uh, but it's down from the property, I'm sure, Mr. Snowden? Yeah, you all see the soccer fields there down below it. Across the street there, I go back up, Drew, or back down, there you go, right there. That piece of property right across the street had to be built, richy, what, three foot, four foot tall, to keep from, to be usable, because of the flooding. Yeah. It's, the, Mr. Snowden? Do you see any problem with the flooding there? That, uh, I mean, I know where stormwater will be on top of it, but...
Yeah, I don't, not necessarily. Uh, Mr. Smith talks about, you know, compliance with our ordinance, but one of the reasons the flow plane gets a lot wider... our ordinance, but one of the reasons the flow plane gets a lot wider, I guess downstream there, is the elevations are a lot less. He sits up a little higher, so I don't believe necessarily that he'll have the same challenges as some of the properties where the, where the soccer fields are.
Mr. Smith knows that, correct?
Yes.
That, that challenge is there?
Yes.
On it. While you're there? Uh, any, you have any heartburn going to PR?
The, I'm not as familiar with that zone. The density that the owner's looking for is, is twelve units per acre for that back portion for his apartments, and that's kind of what we've shown in that site plan, what the property would yield. So I, I would assume that the PR would allow that. I just don't know.
Allow twelve, Jim?
Yeah, twelve units per acre on the residential part is, is kind of what he's wanting to do on that. But that, that's the only heartburn I would have is I'm not familiar with that zone.
I want to make it clear, you're wanting, you're asking for twelve, correct?
That's, that's his, that's what we've got on our concept plan.
Yeah. Amy, can he do twelve at PR? Just to confirm? He can, okay. All righty, I'm ready to make a motion if, uh, let me find it right here. Approve the CA General Business Zone for the portion of parcels 080302 and PR and F Floodway Zones for the other, another portion of the parcel because it is a minor extension of the existing commercial node. So it's not RB, it's PR.
Motion on the floor is to approve the CA General Business Zone for a portion of parcel 083082 and PR Planned Residential and F Floodway Zones for another portion of the parcel because it is a minor extension of an existing commercial node. Is that correct? By Commissioner Daley with a second by Commissioner Jay. Commissioner, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Director Moyers?
Thank you for the promotion, Commissioner. Amy, I, I want to ask you what I was asking you before. Has Planning Commission at any time considered PR for this property?
My understanding is that they did not have that discussion of consideration of PR on this property.
All right. I, I hate to insert myself in this, and I'll just, just interject for your consideration that normally, if we're going to do a zoning, it needs to be considered by the Planning Commission first. They considered RB, they approved RB, come up with PR without it having to be in front of the Planning Commission.
This is the second time, this is the second time this happened. It happened on the Taylors on the Karate where they didn't consider transition zone. So we got a problem, sounds like we got a problem in planning, that they're not considering all options.
Well, right, and, 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 and they can't obviously consider every option, but my concern is just that if they didn't consider, I mean, we're, we're, we've gone from RB that has no density limitation effectively to PR with twelve, and that's, that's fine, except Planning Commission hasn't considered PR at twelve. Normally, you know, nobody challenges it, I guess no harm, no foul, but if somebody were, the courts generally say that, that we don't have to pay attention to what Planning Commission says, but we have to get their input. You know, if they could come back and say, we don't like PR, we want RB, and at that point, this commission could say, well, too bad, we're the, we're the legislative body, we're going to do PR. But it can be a problem if they haven't considered it at all. Now, RB and PR are sufficiently close, maybe it doesn't matter. It's not the same as they considered RB and we're going to do CA or something like that. But still, normally, you want Planning Commission to at least look at that as an option. I'm not telling you you can't do it, I'm just, just for your consideration.
Okay, since you tell me I can't, I don't, I can't do it, I'm going to do it. Motion stands. Motion stays.
Are we going to include up to twelve, any, any kind of density?
Well, PR is up to twelve anyway, correct, Amy?
You have to request it, up to, you have to request PR up to twelve. You have to identify the density.
Up to twelve then. PR up to twelve.
Is the second okay with that? Okay, give me a moment. Let me make sure I've got this correct. We will, the motion is to approve the CA General Business Zone for a portion of parcel 083082 and PR Planned Residential and Floodway, F Floodway Zones up to twelve units an acre for another portion of the parcel because it is a minor extension of existing commercial node and consistent with the sector plan. Motion by Commissioner Daley with a second by Commissioner Jay. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any oppose? That motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we will hold true, Junior Commissioners, to our not keeping you past nine. I don't want to get started into another item. Thank you all for being here. Unless you just are so enthralled, please, by all means. Pardon me? I can't tell where you're sitting. Oh, mock meeting? Yeah, well, that'll be on the twentieth, so. Just a reminder, Junior Commissioner, to reread Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Jay's email about our updates coming up, the mock meeting, which is March twentieth, and then you will be recognized at our March twenty-seventh meeting, and then graduation on March twenty-eighth.
Yep, good.
And do your community service time or your community meeting time.
Thank you, be careful.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I have a moment just to ask Amy a question? Please, before we move on?
Yes.
Amy, you're going to be doing all these reviews now, aren't you, you and Mr. Snowden? So you will look at all these possibilities zonings where we will never have this question again.
Um, in the unincorporated areas of the county, yes. So it'd be myself and Michelle Porche, who you all are probably familiar with, as well as Mike Reynolds.
So we won't have this problem in the future, I'm pretty sure. Hopefully we will. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number seventy-two, one dash U dash twenty-three dash RZ is a request of Timothy Zachary for rezoning from A Agricultural to RA Low Density Residential at 9018 Hillside Avenue, parcel ID 042GB00204 in the 8th Commission District.
Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Tim Zachary, 4200 Deer Run Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item or anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks, will you please read us Planning Commission's recommendation?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the RA Low Density Residential Zone because it's consistent with the adjacent development by a vote of thirteen to zero consent.
What, thank you. Sir, would you like to speak to this project?
No, basically, I'm just wanting to put another dwelling.
We get to the microphone, sorry.
I'm basically just wanting to, there's a trailer on the front, and I'm just wanting to put another trailer on it.
Okay.
And I came on agriculture.
Thank you. Commissioner? Any, any comments or questions? Seeing none, I will look to Commissioner Beeler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will move that we approve this rezoning from Agricultural to RA per the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Motion to approve per Planning Commission's recommendation by Commissioner Beeler with a second by Commissioner Oster. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any oppose? That motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Item seventy-three is one dash J dash twenty-three dash SP, a request of Rebecca Walls for Northwest County Sector Plan Amendment from Ag Agricultural, HP Hillside Protection, SP Stream Protection, RR Rural Residential, HP Hillside Protection, and SP Stream Protection, located at zero and 9841 West Emery Road, parcel ID 076018 and 021 in the 6th Commission District.
Thank you. Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. I'm Robin Askew. I'm an attorney at Lewis Thomason, 620 Market Street, downtown Knoxville. The applicant, Rebecca Walls, is with me, 120 Suburban Road, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37923.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item or anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks, will you please give us Planning Commission's recommendation?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the Sector Plan Amendment to RR Rural Residential and HP Hillside Protection and SP Stream Protection because it's consistent with the surrounding land use and trends and development by a vote of thirteen to zero.
Thank you. If you wish to speak to this project?
Just briefly, I think this has been well-reviewed by the staff. This is sixty-seven acres. The proposed zoning would allow up to three units per acre, however, the applicant is only proposing two-point-two units per acre.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion or questions? Commissioner Frazier?
Can you tell us a little bit about the project, what your intended uses are?
It's a residential development. Um, we're doing approximately, right now, our preliminary site plan is about one hundred and forty-two units, residential, high-quality neighborhood.
Thank you.
I got it.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
I need to abstain from this one, please.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, thank you. I'm actually combining both of these as I'm speaking to this. When I first drove out on that property, I almost had a heart attack because of the way that it lays, but on the top, in fact, it is beautiful, looking over, overlooking the bluff, and had a wonderful conversation with Ms. Walls about the, the plan for the property, and we have jointly discussed and agreed to the two-point-two per acre. I'm very excited about this. It's going to be very high-quality homes, brick and, and, uh, brick and rock fronts, and, and the thing I'm really excited about is it really does fit a niche in carns because, in fact, we, we lack homes in the roughly mid-fives price point. We, we go from more of a, a starter or second home, and then we jump into million-dollar homes. So this will really be a good, good thing for, for our area, and in fact, it's one of these developments that, if I'm not mistaken, I think from the road, you won't even see it.
Correct.
Barely see it because of the slope at the beginning of the property forces the whole development up, up on the very, very wooded ridge. So I would like to go ahead and propose that we accept this recommendation, Planning Commission, from A to, or I'm sorry, Northwest County Sector Plan Amendment from Ag to, um, uh, to Rural Residential.
Second. Motion is to approve the Sector Plan Amendment per Planning Commission's recommendation by Commissioner Hill with a second by Commissioner Frazier. Any more discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question for Director Snowden, and really, it kind of gets into zoning as well. The traffic impact letter talks about maintaining the same level of service?
Yes, ma'am.
With nineteen-hundred trips. Is that likely?
Um, I, I think it's, it's possible. I would hate to kind of really speak in on until, obviously, this is a traffic impact letter. We'll receive a traffic impact analysis with the hundred and thirty lots, so there'll be a lot more robust analysis done. One of the things that we've actually talked to T-Dot about too is, you know, their improvement at the interchange that's to the west of there. Their termini stops before West Emery, so I'm trying to get them to extend their improvement to allow for that left turn lane on to West Emery. So there's some other conversations ongoing that, that might be, you know, a help to this situation. So I don't want to speak too much, but I, I think we can definitely work with our traffic engineer to, to mitigate any of those concerns.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Motion on the floor is to approve per Planning Commission's recommendation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That motion carries.
My abstain.
Next item is number seventy-four, one dash W dash twenty-three dash RZ is a request of Rebecca Walls for rezoning from A Agricultural to PR Planned Residential up to three dwelling units per acre. The property description is the same as the previous item.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Robin Askew, attorney for the applicant, at address of 620 Market Street, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37902. Rebecca Walls, 120 Suburban Drive, 37923.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item or anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the PR Planned Residential Zone up to three dwellings per acre because it's consistent with the growth policy plan guidelines and surrounding development trends and subject to one condition by a vote of thirteen to zero.
Thank you. Anything you wish to add? Commissioners? Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you all for meeting with the District Commissioner and, and talking about density. I just had a quick question. I know that not all of this property is actually usable or buildable, and staff recommended the max density of one-point-eight-three. Was that also discussed in your conversations?
Commissioner Hill?
At the one-point-eight-three, no, we did, we did not discuss the one-point-eight-three. We did have conversations about, about the, again, under three, and my initial ask was two, but I'm really, after, after talking with her and learning the plan, I'm, I'm, I'm really okay with, with a few more homes out there.
Any more discussion? Seeing, seeing none. Commissioner Hill?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Ag to PR at the rate of two-point-two per acre.
Second. Motion on the floor is to approve Planned Residential Zone up to two-point-two dwelling units per acre by Commissioner Hill with a second by Commissioner Skumaker. More discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Commissioner Ward, are you?
I'll be abstaining from this one as well. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. Any oppose? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item seventy-five is deferred to our April meeting. Item seventy-six is one dash K dash twenty-three dash SP, request of Taylor D. Forrester for North County Sector Plan Amendment from LDR Low Density Residential and GC General Commercial to GC General Commercial, located at 9505 High School Road, parcel ID 036028, part of, in the 7th Commission District.
Is the applicant present?
Present.
Please state your name and address for the record. Please state your name and address for the record.
Taylor Forrester, 1111 North North Shore Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37919.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item or anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the Sector Plan Amendment to GC General Commercial because it's a minor extension of this designation from the south and is compatible with the surrounding conditions by a vote of 13 to 0 consent.
Thank you. Mr. Forrester, would you like to speak to this project?
Sure. This small section is part of a substantially larger parcel that actually, I can't see the road name there, but actually crosses both sides of the road. But part of this property already has the appropriate Sector Plan designation, which is CA, and we're asking for the area in blue, which is barely a half-acre, to be brought into that. It's just a minor extension. The area that has the CA designation, the size of it really doesn't allow for any kind of appropriate commercial-style development. This is a commercial node in kind of, I would say, more of a rural area. It's maybe one of the limited commercial nodes. It's a very popular commercial node. It has, there's a post office, fire station, Market Deli, and church. I believe there is demand for some commercial retail to support the residents of this area, not only this commercial node. Would submit that it satisfies the requirements for Sector Plan Amendment. Again, with no opposition on this item, either Planning Commission or here. We hope that you could support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion or questions? Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, it's an extension. What do you plan to do with the property? I mean, it's .53 acres.
So it'll be acre and a half, two acres. But the portion that comes to the corner of the right-of-way there, that's part of the property that we're going to subdivide out from this larger multi-acre track. So this .5 acres allows us, there's Childers Branch Stream there, allows us to handle our stormwater in a more appropriate manner, to collect it with permeable pavers versus having to install any kind of large detention type area.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll look to Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I have no issues with this. I'll make a motion to approve.
Will you, sorry, get closer. Thank you.
I have no issues against this. I make a motion to approve the Sector Plan to General Commercial because it's a minor extension of the designation from the south and it's compatible with surrounding conditions.
Second. Motion to approve Planning Commission's recommendation by Commissioner Lee with a second by Commissioner Oster. All those in favor say aye. Any oppose? That motion carries.
Item 77 is 1-X-23-RZ, request of Taylor D. Forrester for rezoning from A Agricultural to CA General Business. The property description is the same as the previous item.
Taylor Forrester, 1111 North North Shore Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37919.
Thank you. Any opposition? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the CA General Business Zone because it's a minor extension of this zone from the south and is consistent with the surrounding development by a vote of 13 to 0 consent.
Thank you. Mr. Forrester, do you have anything to add?
Just briefly, similar position statement to the Sector Plan Amendment for the rezoning, minor extension. Doesn't really make sense for this area that we're trying to carve out necessarily to be agricultural with it backing up to the CA Zone property. Thanks.
Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioners? Seeing none? Mr. Lee?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I make a motion to approve the CA Zone because it's a minor extension of the zone from the south and it's consistent with the surrounding development.
Second. Motion is to approve the CA Zone, per Planning Commission's recommendation, by Commissioner Lee with a second by Commissioner Frazier. All those in favor say aye. Any oppose? That motion carries. Thank you.
It's weird with y'all not being elevated on us. Thank y'all.
Okay, we will go back to the ones from the beginning.
The first one, item number 58, is 1-C-23-RZ, request of William Sawala for rezoning from PR Plan Residential at 1 to 3 dwelling units per acre, and RA Low Density Residential to PR Plan Residential up to 5 dwelling units per acre.
Will you please state your name and address for the record? And you can bring that down.
Susan Davis, 2713 Wild Ginger, Knoxville. You got to get Susan Davis, 2713 Wild Ginger, Knoxville.
Thank you. Is there any?
William Sawala, 1843 Falling Waters Road, Knoxville, Tennessee.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item or anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, Ms. Brooks?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve the PR Plan Residential Zone up to four dwellings per acre because it's a minor extension of the existing zone, district, and consistent with the Sector Plan by a vote of 13 to 0 consent.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak to this project?
We are just planning on cleaning it up and demolishing the existing home there and adding single-family homes to that property.
Okay. Commissioners, any discussion or questions? Mr. Skoomaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As one of the requirements for rezoning a piece of property, there's supposed to be a sign that's posted out in front on Fox Road. Was that sign removed, or did you ever remember it being even posted on your property?
It was posted there. I don't know that it was removed.
Okay, was it put over where the other signs were that were from zoning back in December and January on Scott Davis's property?
I don't think so, no.
See, and that's why I'm just wondering why people didn't show up at the Planning Commission meeting. I'll have to, I'll check that tonight. Okay.
Thank you.
So how many homes do you want to do? You've got, how many? I'm trying to find the acreage here.
It's close to 2 and 1/2 acres, I believe.
2.4. So you want to do, it's getting late here, 12 homes, is that right? Is that right? No. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Commissioner Oster?
I don't, we don't have anybody here tonight, but there has been quite a few comments. We are having a lot of growth on Fox Road, and it's really having a hard time keeping up with all of the housing that's going in there. So I've been pretty concerned just hearing from the residents, and especially going 5 on this. I think that I'm the most comfortable at 3 units per acre as opposed to 5, only because George Williams and Fox Road is just really, really having a tough time. Matter of fact, Director Snowden and I have been over to George Williams a couple of times with a lot of traffic issues, safety issues, that kind of stuff, and Fox Road is the same way. So I think that's where I'm going to have to give you the 3 units an acre on that instead of the 5 of what you guys are looking for. And I apologize for that, but it's just from what all of the neighbors are saying and just the traffic on Fox Road just makes me really uncomfortable.
So is that your motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion. So the motion is 3 units per acre.
Second.
For Planned Residential?
Planned Residential, I'm sorry.
Motion is to approve Planned Residential Zone up to 3 units per acre by Commissioner Oster with a second by Commissioner Skoomaker. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any oppose? That motion carries. Thank you, and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
The next item is number 61-G-23-RZ, requests Keith Stewart for rezoning from CA General Business to CB Business and Manufacturing.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Keith Stewart. Live at 800 Blows Ferry, Knoxville, 37919.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy? Have you signed up to speak to this? Is there anyone else? Ms. Brooks, will you please give us Planning Commission's recommendation?
Planning Commission recommends that County Commission approve CB Business and Manufacturing Zone because it's an extension of the existing commercial node, subject to one condition.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart, would you like to speak to this?
Just to say that the area, it would suit a light manufacturing. The plan is to put, like, retail up toward the road and then potentially a light manufacturing facility behind it. It's just, we've been trying to develop the property for some time. It's kind of odd, and we think we've got a way to do it, so that's the motivation for bringing this over to the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Kevin Murphy, 4508 Murphy Road. I just want to, on this one, bring commission's attention to, this is the CB Zone, and we don't see a lot of that. CA and CB are less preferred zones now due to generally a lack of standards around landscaping, lighting, noise, and things of that nature. And in particularly, when I was looking at the CB Zone, the description is actually, I think, illustrative of why this might not be a great idea. In the description of the actual zoning ordinance, it says, "The nature of such businesses here is to attract large volumes of automobile and truck traffic and have adverse effects on surrounding properties, hence they're not appropriately associated with nor compatible with residential." Now, right to the south, you can see a bunch of pink, which is Planned Residential for dwelling units an acre. You can see Ag just to the west, and then the PR slot that doesn't have a density on it, that was actually, they just had a concept plan at the same commission, Planning Commission meeting. So there's a condition that was proposed to add a 20-foot landscaping buffer for adjacent residential properties. That was a condition Planning Commission put on it. But there are no other conditions or anything that limit this to, you know, a light manufacturing use or anything like that. So just keep in mind that there's a lot of uses allowed in the zoning ordinance that could be permitted, you know, once you rezone, they put in the landscaping buffer, and then there's a lot of uses that can be just, you know, pulled a building permit for. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to add anything?
No, I mean, the landscaping buffer, the 20 feet, it's on the south and west sides. I mean, we would do that anyway. There is a whole lot of development there. This is very near that intersection, fairly busy intersection. It's not going to encroach on the residential at all. We intend to develop it in a way that it supports the residential, not detracts from it. That wouldn't serve our purposes at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Skoomaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Brooks? It's good to see you smile. Based on the property to the north that's asking for the rezoning and the residential to the south, would this not have been more of an applicable opportunity to use neighborhood commercial because neighborhood commercial zone is a buffer between residential and commercial?
Potentially. My understanding, again, I wasn't there for the internal staff conversations on this one, but that wasn't discussed, and to my recollection, it wasn't discussed either at Planning Commission.
But did the planning staff, well, you don't know if the planning staff even mulled that idea.
No, I think it was more of the, probably, the debate of whether or not to extend the, allow extension of the CB.
But is this not a prime example of where neighborhood commercial would be ideal because you're talking about commercial on the front?
Potentially. I think it would take additional, I would want to take a closer look at this one in the context of neighborhood commercial for the specific site, since it wasn't requested or discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have discussion? Commissioner Daley?
Director Brooks?
Yes, sir.
The, I drive through there quite often, and I don't think it's a bad choice for CB or neighborhood commercial, either one. It's just whatever fits the gentleman's plan the best, which we don't know what that plan is yet, do we?
No, and I apologize. I'm not aware of what neighborhood commercial is. I, I, I just have a clue.
You're limited on neighborhood commercial. If you're trying to build a gas station, like a shale across the street, you can't do that neighborhood commercial, but you do it in general commercial.
It would require more intense design standards, which is something that we would actually like to see.
Okay, well, I just wasn't aware of it when I made the application. I don't know, in reviewing everything and looking at it, this suited what the potential buyer wanted to do. To be honest with you, CA was very close, but it's kind of a gray area because it is a light manufacturing, and so I thought the best approach would be to come and see if the zoning would be acceptable to you guys. I mean, it's not, I mean, I want to make a nice piece of property. I want to put it to its highest and best use. I don't see a gas station or anything like that. It's going to look attractive. It's going to have a nice barrier between the residential. There's nothing, even though it's, there's going to be a barrier on that side, there's really nothing behind it, like away from Dry Gap. It's all commercial, like there's construction and a crossfit there on Cunningham, and then what I'm planning is something more, not, something nice along the road and then be able to do some light manufacturing in the back.
Is, Director Brooks, is CB, does it have lighting requirements? There's no lighting requirements in the CB Zone? That's the only concern that I would have, is that the PR that's going in beside you there, you will have that 20-foot buffer there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We don't need any light pollution.
Sure.
Because those neighbors will have a backyard. The street, of course, will be lit on the front side, but the backside of that neighbor's is their backyard.
Sure. I don't think that's going to be an issue just because of the way it's, the development, that would be the backside of whatever we put in, so I don't think that'll be an issue. There would be vegetation in the backside, so I don't think there would be any issue. I don't anticipate that being an issue.
Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you guarantee this body that it would be an environment free of noise, odor, or congestion? Because...
I can't guarantee that about this room or anywhere else. It's not going to be like a rock-crushing plant. I'm not going to let something like that go in there. It's going, it would be, well, I don't care to tell the commission, the gentleman I'm talking to manufactures an artificial stone, sells it all over the country, that's actually works better than brick and looks better than stone, in my opinion, but it's got a weep system behind it. He just, there will be some dust. It won't leave the site, but it just didn't quite fit CA, I didn't think, and so that's why I've applied for this.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question. So you've got the gas station there on the corner, and that gym across the street, kind of a crossfit place.
Right.
So, and then there's a landscaping place.
No, I think that's going the other way.
Okay. So where would you enter from, on High School or Cunningham?
No, okay, so if you're coming up to that intersection, I think it's Cunningham and then it, or no, it's, yeah, it's Beaver Creek, and then I always get those flipped. then it, or no, it's, yeah, it's Beaver Creek, and then I always get those flipped. So when you're on East Beaver Creek, the gas station's on your left, CrossFit's on your right. If you turn right on Dry Gap, there's actually two entrances. One was for the farmhouse, and then one was on down toward the barn. And there's a sidewalk all the way down through there. So as far as the entrance, we can put it pretty much anywhere down through there. Obviously, we'd want to place it, you know, in conjunction with staff, where it would be the least intrusive to traffic and would serve the site the best. We've also, I'm trying to talk to the gentleman who owns the commercial space. There's like a construction yard behind the crossfit to see about getting potentially access to the backside of the property off Beaver Creek. I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but I'm going to try.
Commissioner Skidmaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Snowden, were you at the January Knox Planning meeting? Since you were not present, is that correct? You were there? Oh, well, I'm reading the minutes here from that meeting, and there was a motion made to deny the rezoning to CB, and it was a six to seven vote, which you don't see that very often. So do you remember why the Planning Commissioners initially voted to, or attempted to, to deny that, although it lost by one vote? Do you remember that at all?
I don't have that good of memories. Yeah, I don't recall any specifics regarding that.
Okay. Well, she, let me let the staff, since she's our authority.
I think it's based on a lot of the discussion that you all are already having in terms of the intensity of the use and, you know, extending that intensity further down into the, closer to these residential areas.
Okay, because it was next to the residential zone.
If I could speak to that. What I recall, I don't recall any discussion of that. It was about the vegetation barrier. That was prior to the condition for the vegetation barrier. They had a vote, and it was closed, but once the, it was settled on the vegetation barrier, they were questioning me about whether I was okay with that, and of course, I'm okay with that. And then, I think it passed 11 to, I'm not sure.
Any more discussion? Commissioner Lee?
I have a question, Mr. Law Director. So could I make a motion to change it to neighborhood commercial? Is that formidable?
Well, it's the same as the one earlier. From what I can tell, neighborhood commercial was not asked for, was not considered. Is that correct, Amy? Was neighborhood commercial ever considered for this? So it's, Commissioner Frazier was talking about precedent earlier. We said a precedent? No, we just go ahead and do it. So it's close enough, but it's a very, it's a very different zone. It's a zone, it goes from certain kinds of uses and very little planning to a different kind of zone that has different kinds of uses and different requirements for planning. Again, normally, this is the kind of thing that you'd put in front of the Planning Commission before, whether they rejected it or accepted it, you get their input on it. But if Mr. Stewart can live with neighborhood commercial, if I were Mr. Stewart, I'd probably want to think about, and he doesn't have the authority to do it, but since we're bringing up a new proposal, he might want to consider himself whether neighborhood commercial will do what he wants it to do. I don't know.
I have no idea.
Amy, could you do that kind of manufacturing in neighborhood commercial?
No. I've got it pulled up.
That's what I was thinking.
The general description of neighborhood commercial provides opportunity to locate limited retail and service uses in a manner convenient to and yet not disruptive to establish residential neighborhoods, is intended to provide for the recurring shopping and personal service needs of nearby residents. You get into uses permitted. You've got grocery stores, household supplies, clothing, shoes, garden, drugs and medicine, small appliance, baked goods, delicatessens, those type of things. Business and personal services, beauty and barber shops, laundry banks, laundromats, business professional, travel, finance, accounting, veterinary clinic, wireless communication facilities, demolition landfills.
It's the opposite direction of what he wants to go to. It would be a downzone than an upzone for commercial. That's not the direction he wants at all.
I just wanted you to be aware of, yeah.
You're better off at keeping it at CA than downzoning it to neighborhood commercial.
And I didn't recognize the nomenclature. I actually read that and looked at that. It's, the only thing I saw that fit what we're trying to do is the CB.
And I hope you do see that our concerns are really...
Order, you're not being recognized. We follow Robert's rules of order. Mr. Lee's got the floor.
I guess I'm kind of concerned about this because that neighborhood behind it and it kind of being out of character, not consistent with what's currently there.
Well, our goal is to make it consistent with the area. We're not looking to come in and drop an eyesore in. We're going to be good neighbors. That's why I was talking about, it'll be more, something more retail up toward the road that'll fit the neighborhood, with the vegetation barrier, and it's going to look nice, but the way the property's situated, that's why I was talking about the access from Beaver Creek, is so that you could have the manufacturing actually behind it. So like in this, if I'm able to put this deal together with the potential buyer, or I don't know if he's going to buy our rent, if we're going to develop it for him, but it would be the manufacturing in the back, and then he would have a display area, like a nice store up front, because that road gets a whole lot of traffic, and we want it to make it look nice. I mean, that area's really coming up. It's developed wonderfully in the last 10, 15 years. I mean, it's, there's a lot going on out there, and we want to be a part of it.
Commissioner Frazier?
I don't think we could do it there, but if you look at the aerial view, you'll see the neighboring PR parcel has not been developed, correct?
Actually, I think that's, I'm sorry. I think that's an old photograph, so all the woods you see to the, I guess that's the south, that's all gone now. That's a neighborhood now. It's coming up.
Commissioner Frazier, are you good? Commissioner Daley?
Thank you. Yes, it is being developed now.
Yeah.
Actually, they're doing a lot of grading across the road and on your side of the road also.
Yeah, up, kind of where that red, that one little house across the road. And you can see that Dry Gap's actually divided there in front of the property. It's wider, it's kind of got a turn lane. I mean, it's, I think it's well-suited for this.
Commissioner Lee, the reason I went ahead and did mine, RB is not a good zone because the property owner can go in, start grading without any type of plans or whatever. So that's why I asked for PR. It's still basically the same. CB and CA is totally different, so, or NC, neighborhood commercial, so I wouldn't recommend trying to change that to neighborhood commercial. Best thing to do is, and we've already said, it's not going to fit his plan. You could send it back. On this one, I would, you would send it back for them to discuss neighborhood commercial, but it's not going to fit his plan.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. Mr. Law Director? Is there an issue if it comes from us as far as returning this? Because I do have some concerns that we're talking about some zoning he's not at all familiar with.
Are you asking if it's okay for you to send it back to Planning Commission? Absolutely.
Us, for us to send it, so that he's not in any way penalized or all right?
That's totally fine.
That's why I would make a motion to send it back to Planning Commission.
For consideration?
Oh, I would make a motion to send it back to Planning Commission.
We need to be, do we need to be specific?
I think you need to give them some direction. I mean, again, the reason that we're talking about it is to consider, I think, neighborhood commercial, but we've already kind of determined that that won't suit Mr. Stewart's needs. So I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what it does to send it back.
And actually, neighborhood commercial would be downgrading it from what it is right now. So it'd be less commercial, not more, and so that wouldn't work for us at all.
Could we, to explore any other options?
Sure. There's a limited universe of what those options are, but if that's what you wish to do, that's certainly within your purview to do.
That's what I'd make a motion for, that we explore all of our options.
The only problem is there isn't another option. There's only one. It's either this or it stays what it is.
Yes. Motion is to send back to Planning Commission to explore other potential zoning options.
Yes.
By Commissioner Lee with a second, by Commissioner Ward, excuse me, Commissioner Beeler. Commissioner Ward?
The gentleman's right. There's only, what he brought is his option, basically. And then downzoning it is not what he wants, so it's either, he keeps it, you deny, if you don't want to give it to him, you deny it, and he stays where he's at at CA, or you can approve it up. But if we're just punting him back, is what, he's going to go in front of planning, and he's going to be like, I don't want to be downzoned, and the only upzone is the one they already approved. So what are we really asking Planning to do? Like, give him industrial? Because they're not going to approve industrial, obviously. Like, there's a limited amount of options that he has, and the option that he wants is the option that's in front of us, which is the option that he has. I don't see, I don't see any point of sending it back down to, I don't even know what Commission, what Planning Commission would even say, because he's not, they're not going to, he's not going to consider a downzone, and it's his money that he's paying to have Commission and Planning to analyze the property. So I feel like we're wasting his time, and if you don't want to give it to him, then fine, just vote it down, don't give him the, but don't, I don't, I think wasting his time is, it's not polite, is the best way for me to say that.
Commissioner Frazier? Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to recognize Mr. Murphy. He asked to speak.
Thank you. And for Mr. Stewart, maybe what you're looking for, if there are some conditions that maybe Planning Commission should have thought and added.
Exactly.
Originally, and you could ask them to do things like lighting condition, landscaping, noise, and you could even consider potentially asking if there's a condition on limiting it to some of the uses in CB. I was looking through the ordinance, and there's not a great zone for light industrial on small parcels. Like, I was looking, and it's like, well, planned commercial is the one you would, might want to look for, but that's, you know, you're looking more like 20 acres. So I think it's, I think Commission, I saw Planning Commission struggle with it, but they didn't go and actually work on, are there some more conditions? And I've seen a, there's one I saw several years ago that was, they zoned it up for the uses, but then they said, but we want to apply the neighborhood commercial landscaping, lighting, and signage, and a couple of other things to it. So it was a fairly simple condition to add. So that may be what you're looking for here. And that would... We can do that here, too. Like, we can apply, like, if you want to make sure he has a 20-foot buffer on one side or other, you guys have more than the ability to do that. If you want to say that he can't have lighting on the backside of the building, we're allowed to do that. We're allowed to do whatever we want to a certain degree, but I don't, if we're going to send it back, I would say, can you send it back to analyze, to analyze the conditions that would be applied to this, not just, hey, take a look at this, and with no direction? I think, you know, the responsible thing would be to send it back to Planning Commission with, hey, are there any conditions that would make this a more comfortable or palatable property zoning to look at? Or we could discuss it here and apply it ourselves. Again, I don't want to waste the gentleman's time and money by jerking him around and trying to force him into something that he doesn't want or is not good for his project. So I just want to make sure that we're being responsible with his time and his money as well.
I'm not exactly familiar with exactly what the lighting, I mean, saying no lighting on the back of the building that would shine over on the neighborhood, that's not going to be a problem. As far as landscaping, we're going to landscape it, so if that were a condition, that's fine. I'd rather not spend going back and back and forth. I mean, if there are conditions, I mean, it was recommended by staff, it passed, you know, MPC, I'd just like to get it done, so we can move, you know, maybe move forward.
Commissioner Beeler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I mean, I see the applicant doesn't really want to go back to Planning Commission. Because I was going to make a couple of suggestions. One suggestion would have been to modify the motion to ask for additional conditions. But, I mean, would it be appropriate if someone wanted to offer a substitute motion to either approve it or deny it? That way, we're not, I mean, we could at least get a chance to vote on the matter being settled and it not going back to Planning. Just a suggestion.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. My concern with that, Commissioner Beeler and Commissioner Ward, is that once you're denied, you're denied. And if, I hope you will consider it a potential courtesy to give this option to go back. And if you want to narrow parameters in a substitute motion, that certainly is, you know, I have no objection to that, but I just, I don't want to, I don't want to see you just throw it out, and I don't want to see you locked into conditions that are just arbitrarily dropped if it's not really in your best interest also. So that really is just a suggestion to give you and Planning another chance to kind of take a deep breath and relook at it. If, you know, if that's not your preference, you don't have to take it back. But if we deny it, then you're dead, you know? So that's my comment.
I'll amend my motion.
Pardon me?
I'll amend my motion.
Okay. There are two, can I call on two other commissioners?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Skidmaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Brooks, I'm trying to remember the items that we've kicked back to Knox Planning. Historically, they've just stuck with their same decision, have they not?
I don't recall all of them, Commissioner, but, you know, to go back to what Commissioner Ward was saying a few minutes ago, if there are certain things that you all want them to consider, please itemize those out. Like, we want, these are our concerns with this particular zoning, and we want you to all to look at lighting, noise, additional buffers. Just be very specific on what you'd like for them to look at. I think that'd be very helpful for the Commissioners.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Daley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I try, like I say, I travel that three, four times a week. The south property has got huge mature trees that will not be cut, because it's in the 20-foot zone. You're going to plant even more. The south side has got huge trees on it. There's nothing wrong with the zone that you're wanting. I don't see, I travel it every three, four times a week, and these trees are mature, large mature trees are there. They're not going to be cut. So I'm going to make a substitute motion that the Planning Commission recommendation approve the CB Business and Manufacturing Zone because it is an extension of the existing commercial node, subject to the one condition, and that's fair.
I'll second.
So you're just making a motion to approve Planning, substitute motion for Planning Commission's recommendation? By Commissioner Daley with a second, by Commissioner Jay. Any more discussion? Commissioner Frazier?
Could I suggest a friendly amendment to the substitute motion? To approve, where am I? I lost it again. Sorry, it's late. Approve CB zone with three conditions, to require one...
require, one, lighting design standards, two, noise standards, and three, landscape design standards inclusive of a Type B landscape screen of 20 feet on the P.R. and A.G. sides.
The gentleman says he's going to do it anyway.
I, I have no objection to that.
Cool.
The second has no objection. If the first has no objection, then the applicant has no objection.
Commissioner Frazier, lighting standards, noise standards, landscaping-
Landscape design standards inclusive of a Type B landscape screen of 20 feet on the P.R. and A.G. sides.
So at this point, no one has an objection. Commissioner Lee, would you like to? Any more discussion? Seeing none. Substitute motion on the floor to approve the C.B. zone with three conditions, lighting design standards, noise design standards, landscaping, landscaping design standards of Type B on the P.R. and A.G. sides. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, sir.
I, I wanted to apologize, I apologize to the chairman. I, I was actually over there. And I missed, I missed first call, so this is my, my pounce.
Thank you all very much. And just remember, Commissioner Daley's going to be checking on that property every four days. Just remember, he's going to be there checking on what you're doing.
Commissioners? We're not done yet. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number 78, ordinance O-23-2-103. It's amending the Knox County Code Appendix A zoning, Article 5, Section 5.31 pertaining to the C.A. general business zone, and Section 5.32 pertaining to the C.B. business and manufacturing zone to allow for consideration of certain permitted uses and uses permitted on review, Article 4, by adding a new subsection 4.108 creating standards for drive-through facilities, and Article 5, Sections 5.37.03. Point C, and 5.38.03. Point E, and 5.91.03 pertaining to drive-through facilities currently permitted as a use on review in the C.R., rural commercial, N.C. neighborhood commercial, and T.C. town center zones, respectively, by adding a reference to proposed subsection 4.108 pertaining to standards for drive-through facilities. This amends ordinance O-90-9-130, adopted September 10th, 1990, on second reading, first, first reading, first reading.
Mr. Murphy has signed up to speak to this. Is there a motion for this item?
Yep.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve amendments as submitted by staff recommendation with the addition of suggested amendments provided in the red line document by KCPA.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second that.
The motion to approve plus the red line items or with those amendments?
Yes, ma'am.
On first reading? By Commissioner Frazier with a second, by Commissioner, Commissioner, excuse me, Mr. Murphy?
Be really brief. I can tell that you all are very tired, in some way. First, I, Kevin Murphy, 4508, Murphy Road. I want to, A, thank Ms. Portier and staff. They did a really great job writing this ordinance. These are some standards for drive-ins that, and drive-through uses and some others, that are really great. And I know they researched the heck out of it and came up with some stuff I hadn't seen before, and I was really excited about that. So that, that's fantastic. The other thing is, this is, this all comes out of the Alco Highway Corridor Study, so this actually represents us implementing some things for that one of our plans says. So this, this is great. So, so a lot of, a lot of positive kudos. We dug through the details. I did talk a little bit with staff prior to this coming through. The C.A. zone, that talks about some use by right for drive-through uses, as well as the C.B., and it talks about tying those to particular road classifications. And one of the biggest things we looked at, as we said, there's a lot of C.A. property around the county that's in the more outskirts areas, that are on like minor arterial roads, which, as originally written, would have been a use by right for a drive-through. And so when you start looking at those properties, like, those people living next to it don't know that that would be a use by right for a drive-through for a bank, or a restaurant, or the 24-hour Taco Bell. So that was our main, one of our main concerns. So that's the main crux of the, of the red line that we submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner J?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Brooks and Mr. Snowden, do you all have any concerns with the red line proposed amendments to what's on the agenda?
I certainly want Amy to weigh in, but I have a, I think Kevin makes some really good points about the arterial, and some of those minor arterials may not be as appropriate as what they appear to be. I do have a concern, though, with the hour requirements. That's, could be a problem practically for my department to enforce, if, you know, I, I don't know exactly what were the hours that may be set, but if they were to be set, you know, I mean, we, obviously, my department works, you know, through the week and, and, you know, normal business hours. You know, some of those hours that, you know, a drive-through may be open late in the afternoon or late in the evening would be problematic for me to enforce.
Do you also have concerns enforcing, I mean, one of the red line on Exhibit A, it's a C6. It's about placing stacking spaces lanes, and it, and it talks about idling vehicles that tend to produce noise and fumes that could cross the property line. I mean, I guess it's enforcing, it, it, it's pacing a restriction on the number of lanes, but it's, again, it's getting into enforcement of fumes and noise.
I looked at that. I think what Kevin was talking about was just trying to avoid that, I guess, that drive aisle to be, to where you can reposition the side a little bit. I think, you know, I don't want to speak for Amy, but I think, you know, through our plans review process, we could possibly mitigate some of that. So my, my concerns is just the hours. I mean, I, I understand the, the, you know, the concern that Kevin has, but I don't know how practically my department can enforce some of those things that, you know, some of those hours that they may be open.
Commissioner J? Commissioner Daley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim, Amy, and Michelle, this is first reading, and I understand it's going to be hard to enforce the hours. So Mr. Frazier could make, amend her motion to get rid of the hour part of it. Or we can come back next month and get rid of the hours part of it, or if there's anything else that you two know of that you really got concerns about. We need to go ahead and get it done tonight, so we'll be ready next, next month.
Neither myself or Ms. Portier have any other concerns beyond the one that was highlighted by Mr. Snowden.
Commissioner Frazier?
And, and it does state, Planning Commission may impose. It does not state will. So the language is, I mean, I'm, yeah. I mean, I'm happy to amend my motion, but it, it does say may. So are you, sorry, are you going to amend your motion, or are you just going to, well, we can, we can continue discussion if you're not ready?
I'll just leave it as.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Beeler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to make the same suggestion, but really, if we, if we pass the motion as is on first reading, just tweaking that little bit of language surely would not constitute a, okay, okay. So I would, I would urge my colleagues to support this on first reading as, as the motion reads.
And I'm going to say there's no more discussion. I don't see any. So the motion on the floor is to approve with red line copy by Commissioner Frazier with a second by Commissioner Hill. All those in favor say aye. Actually, we have to do a roll call. I was on it. Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Ward? Commissioner Ward? Commissioner Ward votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Hill? Commissioner Hill? Commissioner Hill votes aye. Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner J?
Aye.
Commissioner J votes aye. Commissioner Frazier?
Aye.
Commissioner Frazier votes aye. Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lundey votes aye. Commissioner Durritt?
Aye.
Mr. Durritt votes aye. Commissioner Oster?
Aye.
Commissioner Oster votes aye. All members present voting aye. First reading passes. Commissioners, with that, with the second reading approaching, we need to schedule a public hearing on Monday, March 20th, at 6:30 P.M. or following our work session. Is everyone okay with that?
Aye.
Then that, there it is. March 20th, 6:30, or end of work session. I do recommend you all come early that day. That will be our junior commissions mock meeting. So they will be on their own, doing this fun stuff.
Motion to adjourn?
Some of-
We're adjourned.